So Tuesday, April fifteenth, seven oh one P M. I'd like to call the meeting to order, make a motion to call the meeting to order. And roll call vote, it's Addie Mae Weiss, I, Steph Harrison.
Hi.
Rob Wolf.
Hi.
Frank Hook.
Hi.
And that is all who are present currently. Um, okay, and the agenda for tonight is minutes.
I'm sharing it right now.
So we have minutes from February eleventh, we have minutes from March eighteenth, and we have minutes from April first to review. There are no hearings tonight, current planning board business, the annual town meeting preparation, any discussion related to preparing for town meeting, an appointment to the land acquisition committee, and next annual town meeting topics to be discussed, and then other business reports on meetings with other boards and entities, and a town planner report. The motion to accept the agenda, was there, was there any amendments to the agenda or discussion on the agenda? Hearing that, a motion to accept the agenda for this evening.
So moved.
Moved, seconded. Okay, roll call vote, Addie Mae Weiss is I, Steph Harrison.
Hi.
Rob Wolf.
All right.
And Frank Hook.
All right.
Okay, the agenda is accepted for this evening.
Well, let's do those minutes that Frank was talking about first.
Yep.
Jim is just joining.
Okay. So Frank, I also caught this, the climate resilience plan was what I think it was, is that right?
Climate and resilience plan, so C A R P, those are the initials for it, yeah.
And my, what I've heard you say was that you were gonna start tracking implementation of recommendations from that plan.
We're gonna bring out the, um, the things that each of the groups plant, boards and committees were, uh, brought up and also will be assigned to, will be, um, yes, brought to their attention to start working on it and following up and tracking, correct?
Okay, so identifying recommendations. Recommendations arising from the C A R P. And, um, responsible parties.
Tracking responsible party efforts, something.
Okay, okay, got it, and tracking responsible parties efforts.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
So Frank, to confirm goes away, okay. Stay on as long as you like, but don't, don't hesitate to jump.
I guess I'll save for the minutes and then I'll, uh.
Okay. So on these, um, I'm just deleting one Harris and I, because there were two of them. And it looked like there were only four people present at this time.
Yeah, I can't even see the slide, I think.
Yep, that's, yeah, just a minute, yeah. Um. I, Sherburne, I just changed the wording of this sentence because Sherburne is not part of Metro West Regional Collaborative, we're part of Swap, right?
We're part of the Southwest Area Planning Collaborative, which is Swap.
Yes, it says Sherburne is part of Swap and Metro West Collaborative.
What's the other one that we're part of in Framingham, with Framingham?
Uh, I thought we were part of both, actually.
Oh, we are?
It used to be an only one, and then we added the other.
Yeah, we recently added the other.
And we're, we're part of the four ninety-five.
Okay, good.
Yeah, that's it, but the two M A P C groups that we're part of are.
Right.
I didn't catch that we were in both of them now, that's great.
Yes.
Great. All right, so that's April first, that's, that was all the other comments I had, did anyone else have anything for April first?
No comments from me.
February eleventh, I think I had no comments on this one.
Do you want, do you want to make a motion to approve individually?
Wait, sorry, yeah, let's go ahead and approve the, um, what was that, April?
April first.
April first, I make a motion to approve the minute as amended for April first.
Second.
Okay, move seconded, um, all in favor, Addie Mae Weiss is I, Steph Harrison.
Hi.
Rob Wolf.
Hi.
Frank Hook.
Hi.
And Jim Garina.
Hi.
Okay, thank you. All right, so April first is all set, and now we're moving on to which set the.
February eleventh. I don't think I had anything on these.
I didn't have anything on that one. We're making a motion to approve the February eleventh minutes.
I'll second that.
Okay. Addie Mae Weiss is I, Steph Harrison.
Hi.
Rob Wolf.
Hi.
Frank Hook.
Hi.
And Jim Garina.
Hi.
Okay, so that one was as submitted, right, and then April first, close and save, and then we have March eighteenth. March eighteenth. Um, I had a couple things. Um, I just added that he, because he stated in the meeting that he had approvals to build on lots one and two, and submitted a forty B project to the state for lot three, so I just wanted to capture that, because when I go back and look at it, it's helpful information to have, even if it's not germane specifically to the A and R.
I'm gonna make sure he's got approvals.
That's just what he stated, he said, I have approvals.
Approvals from who? Approvals for the septic, was it, from Board of Health, or?
He didn't say, he just said.
Approvals for one.
I got the impression it was Board of Health, yeah.
All right, I would just want to insert, uh, because otherwise, if it's, you know, those, those homes are not, and it's, it's not for the whole home, I don't, my, I mean, well, I guess a house, individual houses don't go before planning board anyway, so I guess.
Right.
Would he have a building permit already from?
No.
No, okay, so he has approvals for septic design?
Right. And he may have Concom as well, I'm not sure, but I just.
I'll just say septic design approval, that's fine. It just gives us a, an idea of what the overall picture is. I have a wording change here, just Heath said it was consistent with the housing plan within was a little weird to me. Um, oh, the trails thing, I felt maybe, maybe I misunderstood this, but the way it read originally, it said, Mr. Murchison noticed that the easement was held by Sherburne Conservation, and he would consider changing, change in location of such, if necessary. I think he said he has no plans to move the trail, but he has the right to, if he wants to. But.
Yeah, I think that would make.
I'm not sure about that second part. Um, I haven't looked at what the easement says.
Yeah, it's just what he said, as opposed to, so we could just say he has no plans to change the location, period, if that is just.
Yeah, I think he just mentioned like his willingness to work with the Conservation Commission.
Yeah.
Right, you want to add that he's willing to change it, because even though he has no plans, he did make a statement that he was willing to look at it.
Yeah. He has no, he has no current plans to change it, but is willing to work with the Conservation Commission if necessary, something like that.
I, I didn't, I didn't take that away, I, I heard him say that he wasn't prepared to give up his right to change it, should he at some point in the future wish to do so. Um, even if you didn't have plans to do it.
Yeah, I think that was more of what he was saying, so.
Can we just say he has no plans to change the location at this time, period, like, I mean, we all agree on that, right?
Yeah.
Is that goo- good enough to document?
I think so, without running into an issue of interpretation.
Said having two of each type of A D U on a given property site, and that's not correct, so I changed it to two A D Us, one of each type. Um. I just put Steph here because it was Steph said this, and then Jeannie said that, and I was just clarifying that it was me who went through all of this stuff, it doesn't really matter much. Um. There was a note here that said the signed by law, about the signed by law, it said Addie Mae Weiss responded that the by law would not go forward as presented, and I think the discussion was about the talking points, rather than the by law itself. At least in my notes, what I thought I was asking about was the talking points, and whether the talking points would be available at the hearing.
But this, by March eighth, did we, had we withdrawn? We, by March eighth, yeah, we withdrawn that.
We withdrawn it, but I think the discussion was really about the talking points in the advisory hearing, not about the by law itself.
Right.
I'm also happy to just delete this on other business, because it's just not really relevant to the overall planning board business, that's fine.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah, um. I mean.
I mean, I guess we made a decision at a previous meeting to withdraw it.
Yeah.
And that happened, so there isn't, there isn't really any new information, is there?
This was just about the talking points, which we were planning, prepared to present, but didn't present, so it's like not really an important detail to me to capture in the minutes, I'm happy to just strike it.
I mean, it's unfortunate that the variety of reasons inter intervened, whatever.
I'm, I agree. Uh, word change here. That's it. Any other comments on this March eighteenth minute meeting, so obviously the page numbers need to move, I'm just gonna not do that right now.
I, I still question saying Board of Health approval on that one, Bob said approvals, I would just leave it as vague as he said it in the meeting.
He said approvals.
Yeah, and I don't think we should go into septic design or anything else, because honestly, I'm not a hundred percent sure what he has, whether it's Conservation or Board, I mean, he's been back and forth to both these places. So I would just leave, he stated he has approval, just leave it.
Okay, yeah, no, I guess, that, that makes sense, I guess, to someone reading the minutes.
It could be misleading.
Like, yeah, I, I guess it's, it's most, well, you know, I would hope people would understand that Planning Board doesn't have any say, but I don't know, it's weird, it's, again, it's just the nature of.
All right, but I just don't want to add anything in there than that was found not to be true.
Right, yeah, we don't necessarily, I can't remember, and I don't know, it was his words, so it does.
Right. If anyone was reading this, yeah, they'd have to look in and ask, and we can say, yeah, check with Board of Health or Conservation.
Right.
All right, we're ready to.
I was looking to clarify that the approval was not from Planning Board, but clearly, like, we don't have any say, so it's not, that's fine.
Yeah.
All right, motion to accept the minutes from March eighteenth as amended.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded, roll call vote, Addie Mae Weiss is I, Steph Harrison.
Hi.
Rob Wolf.
Hi.
Frank Hook.
Hi.
And Jim Garina.
Hi.
All right, thank you, so minutes from March eighteenth are accepted, so all of the minutes are now accepted, thank you, Steph, for that, thank you for everyone who had your input.
I'm getting no cards.
Oh, did we miss one?
Get better, Frank.
Get better.
Oh, yeah, sorry, Frank.
It was me last week.
Oh, no.
Something's going around. Brutal, okay, well, I'm glad you're back, Jim. All right, so moving on with the agenda, we are on to the, um, slides for town meeting, um. We have to submit this actual slide, so Steph, you were the one that most recently presented slides, so I wasn't sure as far as copies of those.
Yeah, I have them already, yep, so what do we want to start with?
Go in the order that it's on the warrant, first one is zoning updates.
So we, I think we have to fill in this form for every slide deck. Like, every presenter has to fill in this for the, for their warrant article that they're presenting. Um. Like, so that might take a little bit of, maybe Heidi, you can suggest.
Let's see, why don't we decide who's presenting on these, um.
And we can fill out, I can work on filling that, the form out tomorrow.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, I can work.
You don't have to do that online, it's like, we can just, we just need to know, um, we have what, we have, we've, it starts with seventeen.
Yep, zoning updates is seventeen.
Well, it's just that, it's just that we, whoever is making the presentation has to put their contact information in here.
Okay.
Right, and then it's a little bit weird, because it's like, it appears from the form that chair of the planning board is the sponsor, but like, if I were presenting one, I might check that I represent the sponsor and have been designated.
It's a generic form that's been used for years and years, for every warrant article, for everyone, including especially like citizens petitions, that's where it gets messy. So it's, it's been, it's an old form, it just gets regurgitated year after year, so I'm not worried about filling it out, I can fill it out with all the correct info. Um, let's see, so seventeen is zoning.
Eighteen is floodplain. Nineteen is A D U. And twenty is M B T A.
Eighteen was floodplain?
Yep.
Nineteen was A D U.
Uh, so Steph, you are the most, you've got zoning really polished.
I do, yeah, I'm okay, I'm okay with that, it's, it's complicated, so I'm happy to just do a redo of the advisory hearing, that's fine.
Okay. Um. I don't remember where we were at, but I, I was inclined to do M B T A, but I can't remember if someone else really wanted that. Like, I just can't, I know we kind of had a rough list, but I mean, I guess I, I would, you know, I'll do, you know, M B T A or A D U, if someone really wanted one or the other, but.
I'll do one or the other, whatever you want.
There's floodplain too, someone's got a.
I'm less well versed in that.
I think everyone's less well versed, although floodplain is actually the easiest. Um. Addie Mae, do you want to stick with M B T A?
Yeah, I'll do the M B T A.
Um.
I mean, I.
Steph had A D U down pretty well, too. And then Jim, do you want to take floodplain, I can sit with you with, on that, it's actually pretty straightforward one.
And it's fine.
Unless you had your, I mean, you have an interest in doing A D U?
I, I, I sort of do, actually, but if Steph wants to do it, um.
So why don't I do the floodplain, because unless there's someone else that wants to, feels like presenting, just split up the voices that are being, you know.
Rob, do you want floodplain?
You're muted.
I have something going on that might possibly prevent me from attending the meeting.
The floodplain's straightforward, so let me, I'll do floodplain and M B T A, Steph has zoning and Jim has A D U.
Okay.
So the purpose of next Monday's meeting is to sort of go through all this and sort it out and practice and.
Wait, what meeting?
That, what meeting next Monday, it's only the town planner Zoom thing.
Okay, never mind, I thought there was a meeting.
This is the last meeting before town meeting.
But, um, I'm gonna ask for help on my talks, if anyone wants to come, and Jim, I'm happy if you want to come, and we can go through.
I'm trying to.
Do a dry run.
I think next Monday.
It's Patriots Day, yeah.
I don't know.
Any first.
Yeah. I'm confused, the twenty eighth, never mind.
Were we meeting the twenty eighth, did we?
Oh, I have another commitment on the twenty eighth, which is actually, I just read what I said.
Is it May first, that's the backup date, I'm just trying to put it on my calendar?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, it's not on my calendar.
Trying to think in my mind when I have meetings and.
Oh, yeah, yeah, because town meeting is the twenty eighth.
Oh, wait.
Jim, why don't you get a look at? Twenty ninth, yes.
Twenty ninth, sorry.
Okay, oh my gosh.
Twenty ninth, um, what was that, Monday?
Twenty ninth, sorry.
Um, Jim, if you want to get a look, Steph can email you the presentation, she has all the points written down on the, the slides. So if you want to get a look at them, I think.
And probably what would be the most helpful, and I've been meaning to also, is to listen, I, I need to, if you're sitting in the car and you're driving, to listen to the, and I'll find the recording and send it out to everyone, the recording from the, um, when you guys did the advisory, was there a recording actually shared, normally there is a.
So we have bullet points established, I can go through and rehearse those, I'm comfortable with.
So what I did for the advisory meeting is it is completely scripted in the notes section of the PowerPoint.
Okay.
So I think it's less important, it's not, it's not like, it's like not fully scripted in terms of like complete sentences, but the points are down here, um. I'm just trying to see if there's, yeah, it's less important for A D Us, but in M B T A, which I expect to be maybe emotional. Um, I have some, you know, some more emotional talking points, right, like, we knew this was going to be really hard for Sherburne, but we also know the compliance is a requirement, so we've been trying to reach all, like, some like tone setting stuff that's in the talking points, that's not in a bullet on the slide. So there's a couple of places, I think, in the, in the M B T A one, where I tried to like, um.
Augment what was on the screen.
Yeah, exactly, the things we didn't want to write down, we as a town.
Before the March twenty second for the M B T A, I had actually gone through, and unfortunately, I'm having sync issues with files, I had files on my, for whatever reason, my OneDrive, when, even though I thought it was the same, it's not syncing, so it's on my computer, my desktop, um, at the office, so I don't have my points for going through, but I had had everything with, yeah, I had taken all your notes and added my own rhythm to this, but I included all of yours.
Well, mine changed, because when you left the room, Addie Mae, completely understandably, like, I went through it again, right, so because then I was never gonna present it until like right before, so I'm just, it's fine, but like, just, it might be different than.
Okay, I'll look at, like, tomorrow when I can open it, I, I thought I had my notes, but I don't, so I can look at what my notes were that I had prepared for the twenty second and pull those up, and, um, look at what you've changed.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask where this resides?
Oh, it's gonna be sent out, it resides, like, this version of it resides in my folder for the hearing, which is, so I'll, I'll send it to you, Jim, but you know, um, definitely like, you, you just get familiar with the material and look at the talking points and make it whatever you need to make it for you to say. I just wanted to make sure you know that there's material in two places, there's what people will see on the slides, and then there's
Yeah.
um, the way that I had scripted it to speak, so.
And, and the only one that we're really tight on timing is the M B T A one, we have to really watch that time, we are at the maximum amount. So we have to make sure that Steph's draw, run, with the advisory presentation just made it within our time allotment.
Yep.
I was hoping it was, it was, I'm assuming it, well, I guess it didn't, maybe I can get the video or, um, when you guys presented, it was the that Monday, the twenty fourth, right?
It was the Monday, yeah.
Twenty, see, twenty second was the Saturday, Sunday was the twenty third, yeah, the twenty fourth, they don't have it up on the cable TV.
It was, no, it wasn't online, I had checked a couple days ago.
Um, hopefully we can get, let me see if I can get that recording, even if it's not online, if we can at least get the recording, and so Jim and I can at least hear how it was that you presented it, um, I'm hoping maybe Jeannie has it, I don't know.
I'm guessing Dan Sickel has it.
Dan will have it, okay, you can ask, Heidi, do you mind reaching out to Dan?
No, that's fine.
You've got that recording, just so that we can, Jim and I can hear and kind of just he, hear how the kind of cadence went on that presentation.
It means we're, we're selling something, so it has to, um, reflect, much like a project, so if we're into selling a project.
It's a pitch, yep. It's an oral interview.
Yeah. So I think right now, the, the key is, is we just need to make sure that we're not, that anything on the slides are, um, we're now, were you, I, I feel like I'd had a separate set of slides that I had sent to Dan, that the graphics were different, um.
Or.
For the March twenty second, and again, I'm annoyed because none of my files are, um, I can pull up maybe my email of what we sent.
Yeah, we did not graphicize, I did not do anything with the presentation style.
Everything and sent it to Dan to have it, to be in the same style as the, to be in the same style um. With the, um, you know, the green and kind of this template, I had pulled all of the zone, all of the slides, all the PowerPoints, um. Computers are great, but it's really annoying when they don't work.
Yeah, I don't think I got a copy of that one either, Addie Mae.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have.
Eddie, me, both of you, when I sent those slides to Dan?
Let me, let me go back and look.
I'm sorry, I just, um. Why am I signed out, why am I not signed in?
Oh. I have what, I found an email to Dan where they're included, hold on.
Oh, yeah, I do have them, they're, they're graphicked.
All right, so I won't set forward it, but it is on Dan's.
I mean, again, I know this is a challenge, you've got your notes on your stuff and.
Well, I'm not gonna use the notes on the PowerPoint, because you don't get the, like, it's not like giving a, Jim, you should know.
I guess the question is, can you, then the version that I had sent for advisory, can we pull those up, are you able to pull those up?
Yeah, but, but I just, I want to explain to Jim that you don't get the presenter view, like, you don't have a laptop in front of you, this is my understanding of it, right? Like, if you have notes to say on the slide, you have to bring those up with you on a paper.
Right, which is why I had everything all printed out, and I was all ready to go on the twenty second, and, um, like I said, those notes, all those cards are all saved on my desktop.
I can make flashcards essentially.
Yeah, I mean, have a month card, and have your, each slide had, each slide had a kind of a card with the bullet points, or however it works for you to read or follow, um.
I, I just, I need a minute to pull them, I can absolutely pull them up, but they all have the same have similar file names, I'm just trying to not get my versions mixed up, and I'm trying to.
I did, I did ask Chris Kaney to, um, come to the town meeting, and he is going to come.
Okay.
He doesn't need to come right at the beginning. He doesn't need to come right at the beginning. Maybe he needs to come on May 1st.
No, 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 we're gonna get this done one night.
You sound so optimistic.
I mean, it looks pretty straightforward. I'm not really concerned. It's just a matter of getting the facts.
Yeah, but we just need to make sure when, I, I guess the main thing is, is we need to look, look at the actual slides tonight because we need to make sure that that version that was sent to advisory has anything changed.
Okay, I'm just, that, I'm moving them from my downloads folder into my town meeting folder. Now I am opening them. Wait, I don't need the capital request one, right?
No. Um, oh, wait, we, well, no, you don't, I mean, we're not gonna change that, that, that presentation. Uh, the capital request presentation. Do we, it's a warrant article, but it's part of, it, within the, we should, we.
We need to have those slides.
We have this, okay. Will we have to present that again?
If it's, if a hold is called.
Only if a hold is called.
Only if a hold is called.
Right, okay.
But it needs to be available.
Yes, and so I, and I should fill out a form.
Okay.
So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna do a side by side, even though it's gonna be hard to find. It's.
All right, so I got grief from Genie while you're doing this, grief from Genie about how Dover's warrant articles are so.
Not related to these slides, guys, just, sorry.
What was that?
What?
No, that you're, the grief that you heard from Genie was not related to these slides.
Well, no, it was because of this, but I was just, while she was getting this ready, I was gonna, I was gonna read you. So this is Dover's, um, floodplain district, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw updating section, blah, blah, in order to comply with the National Flood Insurance Program requirements to include the new effective dates and the maps or to take any action relative thereto. That's it, that's all. Their, their ADU one, uh, again, very little thing, they're not listing anything and, um, that they refer to as the document on file in the office of the town clerk. And I was like, why aren't we doing that?
Well, to be fair, like in our floodplain, when we had to delete a section that Dover didn't have to delete, right? So we had, we had like a wholesale.
They had an update, they said update, and they had to delete, they had to take out the old maps too. Um, you know, but it's just, they, they're, they're very simple language on, on that, like they've got a very different focus and what they refer to is, you know, like documents, if they wanna amend something, they say as shown in the document on file.
Which is. That would fly here.
Yeah, so next year, I think we need to take a page and start looking if we can simplify.
So these are all the same. There's a couple of minor tweaks that Addie May that you added, like clarifying that the building inspector is also the zoning enforcement officer. You added that, which I agree with.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that's fine. So now we can go to the MBTA one. Let's put that side by side with. MBTA. Gotta get it right in there. There we go. All right, so. And you added the article number, which is great. Um, maybe I would do that, just line break in a different place, so multifamily is together.
Sure.
Um. Yep, that's all the same. Townwide mailings and official hearing published in papers and townwide mailings and. It's fine. Yep.
Oh, I may update this slide, um, just to, well, it won't matter for this purpose. We've got the handout.
Yeah.
And it's, the only thing that we, we've recently, in the, in the handout, we updated so that we spelled out, you know, that BP is business professional. Um, you know, RC, but on a slide, it won't really matter. People can, won't be able to.
Yeah, these are all the same. All right, then we have ADUs. ADU. Oops. Can I do a little formatting? Well, I guess it's probably not the best way to spend time. Yeah, so the slide content is the same. I'm not checking floodplanes cuz I don't think anyone would change anything on flood. I mean, I can do it. I'll do it real quick since we're here.
All right, so was there, um, there wasn't anything that we, like, I know you did a little formatting on that one slide, but I don't know how consequential as far as these files that have already been sent and uploaded. We, we are agreeing that those are okay, right? If I, we don't need to change out any of those.
Correct.
Since they've already got them uploaded in their system.
I mean, the formatting's not ideal, but it's fine. These are like right justified for some reason, but that's, that's fine for the purpose of presenting whoever's doing this one is, if, if they're okay with it. Oh, the legend got, this is what, the legend got all messed up. So this one I do think we need to fix cuz this legend was like a put together box, like I faked it and ma, and did color matching because there was no legend in here. So I think we need to, I think we do need to resend this one, in my opinion.
Oh, the box just floated out there.
Yeah, these, these guys just floated.
Yeah.
It's, it's easy enough to fix, but I think it needs to be re, redone, you know?
Okay.
This whole group, and I might even make this a little bit bigger, so it's just. And then if we're gonna do that and we're gonna resend this one, I would probably rather not write justify these bullet points if that's okay with folks.
Yep.
Or centered, which is also not my first preference, but it's fine for. And then the bullets need to be black. Does that work for folks?
Well, can we, would it look better if, if everything was left justified?
Yeah, I think, I generally think so.
I don't know how.
Yeah.
They're just, they're just sort of, ups. It's, I don't, I'm not sure why it was in two text boxes, but that works.
Screwball, but I mean, I didn't.
That looks fine to me. I mean, we could also, sort of, we've got the space on the page to. Um. Separate them visually a little more.
All right, so if you're able to save this version, Steph will send, um, Dan.
To Diane.
To, to Diane, well, yeah, I'll forward, I'll, I'll forward, I'll share all of the presentations and, plus this one to Diane, but, um. And I'll do the, the cover sheets that go with each one.
Okay.
And so then, um, I guess if we could, if, if there's a recording available, it'd be helpful for Jim and I to watch just to kind of see how, since you've got so many notes in there, to kind of see how your flow went. Um, like I said.
So should I send?
Notes ready to go from, I had my cards and everything all printed out because I in the rush, I think my stack of papers got lost, but I have it on my computer. I just don't have it on my home computer here.
So should I send, like, now we have duplicate versions of the PowerPoints, one of which has talking points and the other has the format in it. So what's your, do you want me to just send each version? Like, does Jim get two ADU PowerPoints? Or does the whole planning board get two of each? Like, what, what makes sense here?
I, well, I guess the first question, did everybody on planning board want a copy of all of these presentations? And this, my gut would say Jim might just want the colorful version and the version with notes for the, um, ADU bylaw, just so that he's practicing his notes with looking at the version that's colorful, just so that visually, you know.
Yeah, no, I, at a minimum would send those two to Jim and the MBTA two to you and the floodplain two to you, but alternatively could send everything to everyone. I mean, I have to send everything to Heidi. I mean, I, I just don't know how to.
Does everybody want everything or does, does some people not want all these files? Or does it, I mean, I guess if it's all, will they all fit in one email? I don't, I can't remember if I had to split it up at all or if it'd all fit in.
I don't know. I don't know.
I mean, I guess if they fit in an email, then you can just send it to everybody and people can choose whether they wanna download or not. It's just a question of whether they actually fit in the email.
I think it would be helpful to have everyone get at least Steph's copies with the notes on them.
Yeah.
So should something come up that night, anyone can stand up and give them.
Right.
I don't think you need to have the colored ones, everyone see the colored ones cuz that's gonna be put it up on the screen anyway and, and then.
Okay.
It, it'll fit in one email though, everything, but just put it all in one email. It looks like it'll be less than ten, 10 megabytes, so I'll just do that.
Okay.
So I'll try to rename them before I send them, so it's more obvious.
Yeah, the ones with notes, just maybe start the, the file with the word note.
Sure.
And then you have a different or, or, or maybe something, just, um, a capital N space, just because.
I'll figure out something. I'll figure out something. Um. Do, so I'm not going to then re, so we made some adjustments to the floodplain one. You're gonna take it out of the email that I send. That's gonna be a separate, okay, all right.
So Heidi, you have a, another kind of, let's see. As far as presentation, I don't think we need to go through everything right now. Um. Where's my agenda? I mean, re, reading through the presentations again right now, I feel like everyone's heard all of this. Um.
I'm happy to work with everyone individually.
Yeah. So then what else?
So I had 150 copies made of the packet that shows the running commentary along with the warrant, so that'll be available for people to pick up if they wanna have it to look at.
Yeah, I think anyone who's gonna be in a position to answer questions has to have a hard copy of that because if we need to direct the audience to it.
Right.
And I think that whatever isn't handed out at the table before town meeting starts, we might wanna bring into the room so that people who are like, oh, I wish I had grabbed one of those, can just get one without having to turn in their badge and stuff like that, you know?
That, that's a good idea. Yeah.
Um, Rob and Andy, are you both planning to be at town meeting? Are you able to be there at town meeting?
I'm, I'm planning to be there.
You're planning to be there, okay. Just cuz, you know, well, there's the presentation and then there's the, um, people to get up and speak to, um, kinda answer questions or speak to the issues and Rob and Andy, you both have sat through all of this and heard everybody's and uh, would be welcome to, you know, respond to, help, help assist with responding to questions. Um, or, you know, comments that people make. So.
Okay.
Well, it's good to, um, and I, yeah, Heidi will know kind of some of the things that, I mean, the things that people are going to come up with are that will wanna restate, which it's helpful if, um, you know, sometimes if it's not the presenter, sometimes it's nice to have another voice to restate that this right now, while we're considered a small adjacent community is a really good time to comply and it's zoning, it's not actually building, so, um, you know, I don't know. We, yeah, we've all talked about that ad nauseam, but, um, and there might be other things that come to you as you're listening to people make statements. Um. You know, trying to find the positives. So you have 150 copies made, Heidi?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cuz I, not everyone's gonna take one. They're gonna look at the packet and go, yeah, no, but.
That, hopefully we can encourage some to, to take them and some, it'll keep them occupied during the number of.
I think if the discussion starts getting going, people will wish they had taken them.
Right, and then you'll just have to share with a neighbor if it is, if it's that much of a demand. I, I mean, I hope we have a quorum still left for the zoning bylaw meetings. That's gonna be the next thing.
Right.
And I am making up 150 copies of our zoning map so that we can tell the attorney general that, yes, it was in our display and it was passed out.
Right.
I already have put it in Jackie's office and telling her, had her stamp it and say, that's on file.
I know I paid attention to this at the time, but I don't remember. Uh, Heidi, do you remember off the top of your head what the advisory votes ended up being on our various?
Unanimous.
All of them?
All of them.
Oh, okay, that's good.
Yeah.
And select board, right?
Yep.
And the advisory report is getting printed and sent out to every household. Um. That'll be helpful, hopefully. It's, that's quite a feat of of a production ever, to put that together.
They're actually printing a color copy of that map report. Which I was shocked.
So are we, I mean, I can, we're, everyone has some individual work to do. And if anyone thinks of something that was missed, um, feel free to, if it's a point, you know, send it to Heidi and where appropriate, just, uh, it'll get dispersed. Um, just so that we're not violating any open meeting law and having something being thought of as a deliberation versus just a statement. Um, are we comfortable with moving on from this item on the agenda? Anyone have any objections?
Uh, I just had a, on the agenda, you have feed, discussion of feedback from advisory public hearing, and I just wondered if we've covered that.
I, I had put that in there. I, I had put that in there to abroad, catch all to, in case something came up where people said, oh, you know, we did not want you to do. Blah blah, we know something.
Yeah, okay.
So we're covered, but, but, but no, I, the feedback I had actually was, they thought it went very smoothly, they thought our PowerPoints were good, um, they thought the. Presentations were concise. We didn't have questions. The audience is going to be a little different, uh, when we get there, because the. Advisory, we've spent a bunch of time working with them and what haven't getting them have a lot more time to understand what the articles actually were. So there probably will be a lot more public comment this time, but hopefully, our moderator will. Have, say no repeats and get Sarah Raggy to call the questions.
Um, and we are, we will have electronic voting, which it is helpful. I, I, I've noticed it's, it's uh. A, it just feels more accurate and B, this kind of peer pressure thing is reduced.
There is a little more buzz in the communities that around us about towns trying to. Um, or groups in towns trying to get people to vote no on the MBTA. So that's one of the things I'm trying to keep ahead of. There are people that are gonna say no to this, we know that. Uh, we just need fifty percent plus one.
Is the person who presents responsible for first line of defense on Q and A?
No, not necessarily.
Are there other? People who will be standing, like, Addie May, are you gonna stand up during all of these? As a, like, what, where's the second line of defense or?
Yeah, I mean, I'll be, I mean, I, I'm assuming that all of us will try to kind of sit towards the front. And, or sit where we could get, I guess you don't need to be in the front the whole meeting, so that's kind of, but, um, when it's, yeah, I'll be. I'll move towards the front, but I'm not when, you know, if you're presenting or Jim's presenting, I, I am not gonna stand up there with you, it's your presentation.
No, I'm talking about fielding Q and A, like, I know the moderator fields the Q and A, but how do we? How do we decide when a response is warranted? I just don't recall, because I've never done a presentation.
I mean, I, I, I mean, I know we've done it with, in the past, when we've had multiple planning board members participate and it's, um. And it, basically, someone makes a statement and then it's, it's the moderator recognizes whoever's kind of at the front. Answer, so, you know, if you're up there and, and I'll, I'll be up as well after the presentation time, up near the microphone. Up at the front microphone and prepared to. You know, you, you know, zoning, you are very well versed at, if, if you feel like. Or if there's something that is specific to something that's happened in the past, I don't know, I, I guess we'll see, it'll depend on what questions there are, but.
I, I think whoever is presenting it. That the, from us, it's up to them to say, either they answer it, or they turn around and say, Chris, can you expand on that? You know, that, that's how I would, I think.
Actually, that's, I mean, there's been times in the past if Gino was in attendance, um. And there was a technicality that I maybe didn't have, wasn't sure or confident enough that I had the exact language, I. Would ask if Gino would respond to something, especially if it, but, um, or some, a question came up about. How is another town doing it? And I wasn't sure if there was someone else that had the expertise, like, or if we were. It, it works out.
Well, but I think my question is, like, so I finished the presentation. Do I stay at the mic?
Yeah.
Okay, so then I am the first line of defense for Q and A for that session.
And you, 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 for a minute, or, if you're at any point, you know, we're all there to support each other, so.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to sort of understand logistically, if I'm supposed to stay up there and sort of try to respond when appropriate. And call in other people that.
Yeah.
And I'll be, you know, obviously, you know, in my case, for the one that I'm presenting, I'll be looking at you, Addie May, to see, like, you give me body language if there's something you want to say, right? Like, same for all of you guys, like, if I look down and somebody's like, oh, I can make a point, I'll see that, right, if you throw me a signal, so. Okay, tha- thanks, that's helpful.
Yeah.
Kind of a guess for wanting to complete the, uh. The response.
All right. Does everyone feel comfortable moving on? Um, so the next dynamo on the agenda was the, uh, appointment of a representative from planning board to the land acquisition committee. That's.
I think currently, Rob is the appointment.
Right, although the, the land acquisition committee has been. Kind of dormant lately, so.
Are you, um, willing to continue as a representative from planning boards?
Sure, I mean, it's, God, I'd, I'd have to look back at the, when the last. It has to have been. Nine months ago, maybe.
Well, then, if you're willing to con, to continue for the very reason that it has been dormant, it'd be the most valuable for you to continue, because then if something came up, you would be the most. Kind of aware of what that passed, the, what the last discussion was, whereas if it's a really active committee. Then it's easier for someone new to step in and kind of get engaged, but. Um, if it's been kind of quiet, then if you're willing to continue to be the planning board representative, that would be nice.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm happy to do that, and I'll, I'll ping Frank and see whether he wants to have a meeting again sometime soon.
Okay, so Rob, you'd need to go in and fill out something with Diane and get sworn in with Jackie, because for reappointment.
Um, but she, he didn't get sworn in until it got, all of the appointments go at a select board meeting, and then they, and then after select board approves, then they, they'll be the.
Okay, well, then see Diane, see Diane.
Um, it's, it's a form, and I can, it's a blank form, I can send you it, because it's come up with the housing, um. Housing trust people needing to reappointment, the, the select board has just a standard form that says. You need, you're willing to sit on this appointment, and there's, you know, there's a whole litany of asking for your resume and all, but you've already been on it. Um, it's not necessary to. Repeat your resume and everything, you might even have the form from the last time, and I'm, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Are those quarterly meetings? Are they, are, are they supposed to be, or?
I don't know that they had a fixed schedule, um. The meetings were basically whenever the chair called a meeting, I think. And it's, whenever they determined they had some business. The last thing that was really going on there was with, um. The, the town acquiring a little bit of property over near the CSX rail line. And. That got held up for a long time with title issues. And I don't even know if it's resolved now, but, um. Anyway, no, I, I don't think there was a fixed schedule, I mean, when we were working. A significant issue, we sometimes met two months in a row. Um, and then it'd go a long time without a meeting.
Because the, the housing trust is supposed to have quarterly meetings, unfortunately, it couldn't make the last one, so I don't know if there's another one scheduled. We're, we're moving past the first quarter. I don't know if it's the same. I'll have to look into that, I guess, but.
Well, if there, um, if there is another meeting, Rob, scheduled, is, is there someone who's? Actually, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't hurt if, um, if there is another meeting scheduled, Rob, if you would just share with the planning board that there. That there's a plan to meet, and then if there's someone that's interested, if there's more than one person interested, then we'll figure it out, but. Just in case someone else is interested in attending that meeting and may not be having on their radar.
Okay. We'll do.
All right, so thank you, Rob, and I'll, I'll look, I'll send you that form that Diane. Or actually, I'll just let Diane know and she'll forward you the form. If you hadn't done it once, be, if you didn't do it in the past, um, you'll see, it's, it's a blank form, and it's really designed for committees that, um. People are being appointed that the select board doesn't know anything about them, and, you know, someone new to town, it provides an opportunity to submit. A resume and information, but, um. Since you've been. On so many committees and over the years that you're, you're well known already, so I don't think you need to fill the form out in detail.
Okay.
All right, and the, um. Heidi, you've got next annual town meeting topics?
I just put them down thinking we should start. Getting people to think about what they'd want to look for next year. Such as the battery energy storage systems, uh, maybe smaller solar, but. I, I know that this year hasn't started, ended, but. We saw how we ran out of time. So just, just to put on people's radar, think about topics that we can bring to the table.
Well, we need to do ADU version two.
Uh, that's gonna be on there too, yeah.
We need to do updates version two. Assuming the budget passes.
Yeah. And we might not need ADU version two, we don't know yet. But, but yes, I just kind of want people to start thinking so that we don't spend all of June trying to come up with. What we should do, and then all of a sudden it's July and people are away for vacation, and then we're crunching. Trying to do a working sessions in August.
And Heidi, you were going to track some of the comments that came in late that we didn't address, right, like? The moderators' comments, Marian's comments, that we need to figure out how to address?
Right.
And then we have the original spreadsheet that we were looking at for.
Right.
By law updates that we could always revisit.
Yep.
So there's a couple places, but I think those emails might get lost if we don't try to put them all in one place, so appreciate that.
Right. Um. Other business, reports on meetings with other boards and entities.
I can do town planner report if you don't have anything else.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, uh, so I am going to hold two more outreach sessions. Um, on next Monday and Tuesday, one is gonna be hybrid and the other one is gonna be Zoom. Uh, not hybrid, sorry, in person, and the other one is gonna be Zoom, um, we had too many issues with trying to get the hybrid going, so. We decided not to. Uh, do a hybrid attempt. Um, I would love to have it if anyone can, is willing to volunteer to attend.
When are they?
It is Monday at seven to eight, or Tuesday from seven to eight.
And which is which?
Think the Monday is in person.
This is.
Monday is in person at the town hall. And Tuesday is Zoom. And everyone will be receiving a card like this in the mail on the next day or two.
Break for those of us who have small children.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's. I know it's hard, and if, if anyone can't make it, I understand, but I'm just kind of. Willing to have someone else and love to have some other company of people who can answer, um, what I put on the topics that I'm trying to get now is. Um, why should Sherwin comply? Can we remove ourselves from being an MBTA community? Because Paul Durensis twice has mentioned how this is an option, I want to address it. If people ask the question of, um. Theoretically, we can, but also I want people to think of realistically, would the state approve that? Um, what about towns that are fighting this? Because this is a common thing I'm listening to, and I'm finding out that. There are these citizen groups that are joining some of the battles, and they're still trying to decide whether, um, it was unfunded mandate, states. Seems very, uh, confident that the case is that it will not be found. Um, to be an unfunded mandate, but there are groups that are still going to try and fight that, that it's in court, there's no decision. Uh. My concern.
Whenever those types of questions come up, though, it's really important to say, like. That, that is on an independent, on a track that's independent from this bylaw.
Right.
And that the bylaw. Still needs to be approved, even if those other things are being explored. Like, that kind of needs to be the main talking point to respond to those.
Yeah, no, and, and I, I'm hoping that we even view this as an economic decision for us. You know, we do not want to lose grant money, we do not want to. Be spending out a lot of money and time for something that may not get anywhere, we can always join up later, but right now, we want to make sure we get, keep the money coming into this town. And all our options open. Uh, and then what are neighboring towns doing, you know, looking at what some of the other towns are doing and what. What, what, what areas they have chosen.
Oh, I have that in my talking points for the MBTA, um, the notes. Because we took the time in one planning board meeting to lay out all of our neighbors and what their requirements are, so those are in square brackets in the notes.
Right.
Um.
Yeah, I had pulled those into my. My point.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I, I seen all of that, yeah.
Yeah.
And then the other point being is that if we outgrow the small designation.
Right.
That, then we're in that same boat, right?
Right, although I, I.
Instead of ninety, seventy-eight, you know, yeah, ninety.
Right, although I found this, the small designation was for under seven thousand people, and not under five thousand, so I don't know how we've been saying it's been under five thousand people. Because then I kept saying, how could Dover be in this? Dover has more than five thousand.
Yeah.
Dover is a small. So it is under seven thousand people, I did look that up, actually.
Then we're not as.
We're not at risk, as much of a risk.
Well, I guess so then. I guess it just puts it in perspective, that our ask is small, and it's a small. Dip in our situation to pass this versus not passing, which would be. A much more. Uh, potentially a hard, harder hit.
All right, but, but I think if we look at Milis, Medway, Medfield, Holliston, they all have to zone for seven hundred and fifty units.
Yeah.
So, that's what I kind of want to focus on and. No, and, uh. I think that's. We, we are gonna have a scenic road hearing on May sixth, on our next meeting. That Bob Murchison has come back on Farm Road, he's moving the driveway from the, the engineering didn't work out on the space he chose, so he has to do another scenic road hearing to be able to move that driveway. He has flagged it, it is staked out, it is actually. Probably twenty feet off from the gravel driveway that's there. Further away from town center. Um, so if anyone wants to drive by, you can see where it's gonna be, and I will be sending the information out the next week or so for people to look at, but. There are no trees there, it's the same type of rock wall we looked at before for him, it's just gonna be shifting that location. And that's it.
And then, May sixth will be in person hybrid.
May sixth, I'm planning hybrid. Um. May twentieth, what do people want to do? Do you want to do Zoom again? Or hybrid?
When's the election?
May.
May thirteenth, I mean, yeah, May thirteenth.
So May twentieth will be the first meeting with, um. Hopefully Brett Piercey, I haven't heard of any other.
Candidate.
Yeah, I just can't, I can't make the meeting on the, I can't make the twentieth that date, but.
Okay.
Let me save Zoom for that first one, just, um. Cause, are you able to be on Zoom?
No.
Okay, okay, um. Unless it's a date, a date, otherwise, I don't know, Rob or Jim since.
Yeah, um. When does? When do our terms change over?
At the election.
Be with.
At the election.
Action, yeah.
So the twentieth, Addie May, would, you wouldn't, you would not be there, I assume?
Yeah, I guess as of the twentieth, I'm technically not, after elections, I'm technically not on the board.
So, when do we have to appoint a new chair?
Um, I was, I was gonna recommend that we, um, reorganize at our May sixth meeting. So that if our current board. So that it's our current board making the um decisions for reorganization. Is that okay with everyone?
Yeah, that's okay. I think my thought on it, just from where I sit right now, is that. We've got, you know, potential person coming on who has no experience with the planning board. And um. No one, no one really has longevity anymore. Um so my thought is to. Try to bet get have a couple of months to better understand like the new dynamic, um maybe just. Uh who's the vice chair right now?
Frank. Frank is the vice chair, yeah.
So if we did like a temporary, you know, vice chair appointment. Not have like a full-fledged restructuring for a whole year, but just get a couple of. Just try to feel out, I don't know, it just.
I mean, I, well. I know, well, I mean, I guess it depends, every board, you know, there's, you know, some boards reorganize every year. Um, and then that just kind of give, kind of rotates everyone through and but then there's, you can certainly. You can, you know, every year, actually, every board should every year address the issue. Um I know. Chris did bring it up each year and we and even and I believe be previous when it was John Higley and he served a number of years, but it was brought up. But um, you know, it depends on all the personalities on the board, but nobody else at the time wanted or was in a position to step up, but. You know, I don't know, um, I think we should decide. As a board with our current membership for reorg. Before I roll off, because it just seems kind of awkward to ask someone who's brand new to the board to make a decision. Not knowing who's had the most, uh kind of who's been part of the board and expressing. Um doing kind of equipped potentially to to chair. So I I feel that our current board should reorganize and decide who will the next chair be. And vice chair and so forth.
Yeah, in in terms of like how often you appoint the new chair. This is like a really familiar thing from my career in engineering where, you know. Uh I sort of feel like the the trap you fall into is you say, well, here's the person who's had the most experience, let's have them keep doing it. And you keep doing it until, you know, they've had enough, but um. You really, if you can, I I feel kind of silly saying this because I've. I've had a lot of distractions recently and I haven't been able to pay as much attention to the board as I should, but if you kind of. Really. Really kind of have the culture where everybody tries to take a turn and do it. You get a lot of cross-training in there and I think you. You may, if it works, you can get a stronger board in the end by doing that. But um, I don't know, it's up to what people are willing to commit to, I guess. It's obviously a lot more work to be chair than to be in any other position on the board.
Jim, do you have any thoughts?
We know who the candidates are.
So maybe everyone just think about it and talk about it on the sixth.
Any.
I mean, who who's expressing interest? I mean, I think I know, but I I haven't heard officially either way.
I know, I mean, you know, I guess if you were to say, I think Rob and Frank got on the board around the same time. And have been participating, um Steph is technically the longest. Because if you count the six years of minute taking and knowing all of the past history of the board. Jim, you're our newest member and then Brett will be the newest newest, um.
I I don't, I don't have any interest, I'll I'll lay up with that out there.
I don't, I don't think that longevity should dictate anything, in my opinion.
No, I mean longevity, right, I mean you you it's it's more, I mean, I guess really it's the being able to be responsive to documents. Being able to share documents with the whole board, so somewhat being willing to, you know, monitor emails and. Share distribute be in communication with Heidi to help be um, you know, respond um. And I mean, Steph, I guess if I were to have to nominate someone right now, uh you're. In my mind, I'd pick you only because you haven't, not based on longevity, which you have the longevity, but just your. The um, just because there's so much document heavy right now lately of of trying to. You know, that some of it's been warrant articles, but the work that's been done over the last two years with the MBTA and the ADU bylaw. And some of that might, you know, in another normal year, it might be more just, um you might not need as much, you know, computer homework. Behind the scenes as we've had this past year or two years, so. Um, but for the the chair, the the kind of immediately is we're still kind of tying loose ends up. The chair needs to be someone that's able to um, you know, meet sometimes at odd times. Um, and uh, yeah, mostly be able to manage all the documents and getting, making sure that. Those, you know, things are done, so um, I guess that's where. Steph, you would be my, my, that would, I would nominate you, um if you were willing to serve, because I think it's important. And while. And I know Frank has maybe expressed an interest and um, Frank can certainly run a meeting. And that's important too, um just the amount of, I mean, to me, it's it's the chair at the. The way kind of technology and the way things have evolved has been this need to have. I mean, Heidi is there, but there's a lot of times things that come directly to the chair from other boards and. You know, noticing that it's in your inbox and then kind of noticing like, do you either distribute it to the board or do you, what could, is there something that you can address? Or I don't know, it's just, it's a, it's the world that we're in right now. So.
Well, why don't we put this on for next week, uh next discussion and so Frank can have a chance to to weigh in a little bit, hear his thoughts.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Thanks, thanks, Adi May for your words.
Oh, only because it can be under our reports, but I I don't have it as a separate topic right now on the agenda.
Just, just hearing what you're saying, Adi May, I think um. And the, and with the notion of kind of roles and responsibilities and a little bit what Rob was saying of of. Uh rotation, you know, i- is this a discussion just about the board chair? Role, or is it actually thinking about a sort of a revised operational model? You know, how how are documents communicated? Should they? You know, should we have a common place where documents reside? That everyone can access rather than using emails. So I've, there's lots of things where I sort of feel I haven't. Necessarily seen things that people are talking about and sometimes I miss the email or sometimes it wasn't in one. And I I just wonder if that there's a little, there's a little bit of a discussion around the operational model. Uh of of how we share information and and the board is also uh something to talk about and actually could.
Yeah.
Kind of, kind of relieve the, the, the um, the acute. Role of the chair in some aspect.
Yeah, I know, I know it's documents and that's always been a challenge. I know when I first got on and we were working on the master plan. Um, and there was a lot of different file versions and documents, um we had, we had a Dropbox. That everybody could access and see the files and then we were told that, no, we couldn't do that because even though we weren't talking about those documents. Everyone having access to a document library that maybe Pete, someone was making an edit on and then putting it back in the folder was considered. A violation of open meeting law.
Oh.
So, that being said, I also understand Conservation Commission does have a. Library of documents, I guess, I guess maybe that's the difference, um, I guess we could have a. A shared library. Or just accessing, accessing accesses, yeah.
They'd have to be read only.
Getting completed documents, um, and maybe that's the difference versus the master plan. We were all trying to take a chunk, edit it and and maybe that's. That was what was construed as deliberation versus just having a library of, these are all the files. Um, I know the other, I mean, of course, then there's a, you know, we've got SharePoint, but I seem to be the only one having syncing issues right now where. Um, we, we, everyone on the planning board has a Sherborne MA email account, so we could have a SharePoint. Drive set up for planning board, because and that's the challenge, not every board or committee has um. Sherborne MA emails for all of their members, um, but we do, the planning board does, so. We could have a Microsoft SharePoint drive if people are familiar with that, it's, I know Heidi's. I tried to introduce her, it's a little chunky, um.
It's too hard to me with my server one that I have to have for the town. It it's like my my repository has to be the town one that Jeremy can then access and that that's, it's like, yeah, it gets clunky with.
But we shouldn't go down a rabbit hole here, but I I just, I'm just, I was just wondering whether there was a um. Well, you know, what what the constraints are and whether there's an opportunity to consider um a different sharing method. Could be more efficient.
Yeah, I, I understand how the open meeting law makes it difficult to. You have to be careful with things that are in process, but one thing that I do, which seems kind of silly. And is really a duplication is, I have. A folder for every meeting we have and I put all the documents that Heidi mails out for that meeting. In that folder and, cause it seems like, you know, if you go to the town's website, you get. All the agendas and you get the minutes, but with quite a bit of lag, you nothing gets posted until after it's been. Um reviewed and approved, um but then all the other documents we consider at meetings. You know, may or may not show up somewhere, but there isn't any straightforward way I can think of to access them. Maybe Heidi could, you know. Clarify that, but it it just like if we um, you know, when we do an A and R, I assume it goes in permanent files somewhere. But it is, um, it's no longer accessible by like the general public, is it?
No, we don't have that option. They'd have to, public would come in and I'd pull it for them or email it to them. But they can't log into our system to see it.
Right.
Right now.
And as it is, I mean, even though, yeah, I mean, like. I'm on a town computer, but my computer can't see your, the same drive that you work from, so I can't access your files, so.
Which is unbelievable, yeah.
I mean, I don't think you get into trouble if the documents are read only and you can't edit them. It'd be good to have that stuff sort of organized.
It's just that maintaining that because it's Heidi's already is gonna have, I guess that's the question if everyone's. Ready to deal with uh and who's gonna maintain it, because that's not gonna be, um, like I said, I already had tried to shift Heidi to. SharePoint, um, and it doesn't work, so um.
SharePoint's difficult, I don't really care for it. I I prefer Google, it's much easier to use, I think, but. If.
And I don't know, yeah. We, I mean, maybe we could try Google Drive, I don't know if we're allowed to have a Google.
That's, I was just gonna say, I think we also have to see what IT allows us to do in town.
Yeah, there's the security training we all have to do as well.
Yeah, I I think this is a good question, Andy, that you brought up and I don't think we have a. Good answer right now, but that doesn't mean it can't be better.
Yeah, I mean, for my personal use, I don't think I've ever gone back more than one or two months to look at something. It's like, you know. I have, I have a set of files probably for every meeting I've been on since I was first up. Oh elected to the board or actually, I guess I was appointed initially for, whatever, but um. You know, the ones from three years ago, I I would never go back and look at them, it's just like when the notes, when the. The meeting minutes go around to review them, sometimes in order to even review them intelligently, I have to go back and look at the documents. That were associated with the meeting to, to, you know, prompt my memory. So I I don't know if it's a super important issue, I mean, every everything that we. Any document that has some legal standing ends up in some file somewhere associated with that, whether if it's, you know, a special permit or an A and R. Or something like that, so. Maybe it's a non-issue.
Steph is it, I guess, just because I, uh I guess we don't have this as an agenda item, so we're gonna, everyone think.
Yeah.
I guess, um, and I guess uh. With that. Are we, um, I guess, uh Monday, is there anybody who's able to be in person? I am not able to be in person with Heidi on Monday. Is there anyone who is able to be in first person with Heidi on Monday for that town meeting, I mean, town hall session from seven to eight?
Likewise.
I could probably be there, yeah.
Okay.
Alright, so Rob.
Last time I did it as a hybrid meeting and we had three people in person and like fourteen on Zoom. So I I am splitting it up this time because it was too difficult for me to try and run the hybrid one. And talk to, and give the talk to people, um so we may not have many people that show up, I don't know, but. I I need to have this available to people. I'm still going to the COA coffees, I'm not gonna make it this week, I'll make the next week one. And that that has been good, reaching a few of the senior residents out there.
Alright, so Rob will be with Heidi and it might just be the two of you for an hour sitting there, so. You can brainstorm.
You can look at files, Rob.
Take the board function if no one shows up.
Is it gonna be in our usual meeting room or?
Uh the the select board meeting room upstairs, second floor, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, okay.
And then um. The Zoom on Tuesday, seven to eight, I I might be able to, but I don't know since we'll be on the road, so um I haven't quite. Figured out my path, but is there anyone who's got it on their plan to be there? And I guess if if no one knows yet, we can, you can decide later, but if there was someone who thought definitely. Okay. Alright, with that, any other? Discussion that um falls within the agenda guidelines? Hearing none, I think uh. Motion to adjourn for the evening?
So.
Alright. Moved, seconded, will call vote, Adi May, wise, I, Steph Harrison.
Hi.
Rob Wolf.
Hi.
Jim Guarino.
Hi.
Alright, thank you, everyone. Motion, meetings adjourned to eight thirty one PM Tuesday, April fifteenth.